Are you going to try to guess?
Those guys.
But it's a lot of words.
All right, can I start open with the city planning and developing? And the first item on the agenda is zoning change request for 1075 Strong Street. Avi is here. Avi?
Good evening.
I'd like to just recognize the owner. This is in the neighborhood. We're not, according to MLS, in the last several years, we're not selling sufficiently high to make it commercially viable to build homes there. So that's why the zoning change. And last picture I probably need to show and then I'm out of here. Thank you, Ben. This is how the new facility, which we have had trust choice designed by Bellevue Lumber, so they're full span for the full 39 feet width. It's a four bay facility. It has a small office in the front. It has proper setbacks on the side. It has arboriding all the way around and parking for both residents, office members, and the tractors when they come in. The doors will be closed. There will be no noise or problems. It will have proper ventilation with a tube to the exhaust pipe. And that's the end of my presentation. One minute.
What took you so long?
Questions.
What?
Questions, Ms. Porterfield?
Yeah, I have a question, actually, kind of a statement. I know that we just came before this before, and one of the concerns was that the property currently stands, they were parking whatever the front of the truck is called, cabs, in there, and actually, I think some entire vehicles. And according to planning, they weren't supposed to be doing that, and that has continued. And I know the owners are right here. I happen to live in the area, and that has continued. So my concern is that what all the plans that it gives us, are they going to abide by that, or is there going to be now obstruction of the street? Because it's a very narrow kind of turn when you come in off of Wiley into Strong Street. So I really have concerns about that, because that was something that they said wouldn't happen, they wouldn't have vehicles there, and the vehicles have been there on a pretty continual basis. They move back and forth, but there are times there are up to four or five vehicles in the lot when they weren't supposed to be there during, until this process was through. But it's continued.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Actually issued, there was a violation for it to make sure everything was in compliance. I did, or pre-inspection of the properties. I don't know what the status has been since then, but it wasn't compliant. See, I removed the vehicles.
How long ago was that? Because it happens regularly. I have to say.
Probably about a month, maybe two months ago.
Regularly it's happening. I mean, I'm not lying or making this up. The owner's right here, you can ask him, and I don't know what the reason for it is, but it has been happening. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I think it's a good plan, to make that the plan's adhered to, so that we're not having traffic trailers in that area, which is difficult to maneuver as it stands currently.
Yeah, I mean, you know, well, the planning commission was going to have the same stipulations as that they're stating to make sure it's compliant. So we can check it out and make sure that it isn't good standing right now. But, you know, I can only go on based on the last inspection.
Okay, I'll send you some questions.
John.
I'd like to say something. Say to Mr. Avi, Avi checked herself. We moved from that location right now, we operate out of Amherst Street, brush a lot. So we're ready to open here. So if you're going to brush it through this hotel, then we get a program, I was going by Mr. Avi. So we're not using that for parking.
I'm sorry, sir, but you have them. I take you just because I come by, so there haven't vehicles down there.
You guys are free to inspect the gate, and by then we can pick them up here.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll leave the setup construction drawings for my tables associate here.
So I believe we have to call for a public hearing. Calling for a public hearing, so we'll have that in two weeks.
Thank you very much for the time.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is demolition and degree removal. Ray, you're up. Questions? Ms. Porterfield?
So what are we doing, if anything, to make sure that smaller firms have an opportunity, like specifically MWBEs, to be a part of this city money that we're spending? They have the apprenticeship program.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in your hands.
Any other questions?
Move it.
I'll move second group one.
Right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move group two.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is Mr. Wallen. You have a couple of items up here.
We got a one.
Abandoned.
One.
Mr. Wallen, you're up. Item number one.
Item number one. For the agenda, abandonment of a section of Prime Street. So that's the first thing. This is a section of Prime Street which is no longer usable by the city. It's connected to, was at a ground closing, a bridge on Green Street that connected Edible Mar to North Center Street. So this area would be unusable, wanted to abandon, and possibly available to the addition to property, but this is a call for public transportation. This is a small section, I can see this right here.
Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is Ulster Street?
The next one is a section of Ulster Street. If you're familiar with this, between Belmont and Regal, there is a portion of Ulster Street that one home building. Over there is a second portion of Ulster Street that is not developed. As you see in the survey, somewhere near the time called Prime Street, you're going to abandon this portion of property that is really not being owned by the city, and that possibly make it available to be different property around the side.
Questions?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Wallen, next up is firing range.
Okay. This is the awarding contract for a specific inlet abatement in the existing but unused, pretty much abandoned firing range at this technical place in property. So I wanted to know the first apartment could receive a grant to reinvest and revitalize the firing range. However, before we can do that, we have to clean. Used to use lead and ammo and things like that, so there's a lot of maintenance that has to clean and make it pretty much an empty box, so that we can rebuild the firing range at the P D.
If you notice.
I was bringing up another thing, to notice the bid price did work. Different. We gave it, the engineer has spent first project, watched 100,000 hours. As you know, we've talked about, we have been seeing a lot of high bids to the main. We did have two follow-up meetings, wait the act part, and also walk the site with them. We had our engineer, you know, a big company with them as well, and we had sign off that they are comfortable with the work, and there is nothing that they see that is beyond what it was. They all wanted to cover their bases, because, you know, there's new work, they technically always quite with money on the table. But this is, you know, a lot of the jobs, this is the pressure they're setting, they're going to honor forward. So given that, we have no reason to take them out of the working.
Yes, Ms. Porterfield?
Have we used them before?
We have not.
Any other questions?
Two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the last one is Bittersweet Candy Company?
Yep, this is a.
For a new company, we run to J Street, 178 J Street, next to the O'Brien and Sharp, just to avoid any confusion. They took it up, but there was area, it's going to be similar to what O'Brien is looking like out there, and this is a whole mom inspired, you know, make it look like Bittersweet Candy.
Questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
This is going to be recess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are in recess.
All right, I will call government operations to order, and the first item on the agenda is an update on the youth advisory board, Mr. Kozier.
Yes, thank you. And again, we created this board, it was approved by the council a few months ago, and schools now in session, and all the paperwork and everything is out. So I met with the high school students last week. They have about 15 teenagers that are interested, very interested. We have three advisors from high school, so they're going to be completing the applications. They're very interested in applying for grant through the Thriving Neighborhoods Challenge. They're going to the meeting Thursday night at the Honorable Karen B. Johnson Library, so they're looking to do some sort of neighborhood collaboration with the students. But they're filling out the paperwork, and once we get their applications into us, I'll share them with everybody here. Obviously, we're hoping that the two staff, or two of the staff advisors at the high school will kind of walk us through it. Diversity is second, and none over there. I can't tell you how proud he was of these students that had attended the meeting. And again, we've got good representation of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, which is really what we're looking for. So we'll give you more information as it develops, but I just want to give the council some information as far as the profoundly missing off ground.
Questions, anyone? No? Okay, thank you. And on to the DSAD, DSIC district expansion update, also Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, so we want to hopefully move on this expansion. We had the public hearing a few weeks ago. We had some concerns from some of the businesses there. There was an article published in Gazette regarding it as well, and both myself and Councilman Riggi met with two of the business owners there. And after a conversation with them, really, they're very, very supportive with the entire expansion. There's still some questions to be asked, but we feel very confident working with them. And again, they are very excited, Mr. Riggi chiming as well, but very confident and excited to be part of the DSIC expansion. Did you have anything to add to that?
No, it's just to see, I think there's two business owners that still have some issues that we need to talk about.
Right. Yeah, but again, I feel very comfortable moving, because again, they just need 51% of the businesses' approval to move this and all this entire thing. And again, they're working out, so I'm sure they'll work whatever has to be done.
You mentioned something, though, when I spoke to you earlier last week, Sunset. Does that still get part of the plan?
No, we're not going to do that. There's no need to. I don't see any need to do that. Mr. Feltico, I mean, you will get out as well. Nobody expressed that need to put that in there as a part of the Sunset clause. We're talking about possibly two years, and then bring it back to the council. But again, the two businesses we met with were very exciting. I know the wing, I didn't attend the wing fest this weekend, but I'm sure it had to be tremendously successful. Jim Solango had a nice big press release on it as well. We'll plug the 20 North and Fairer Wings again, fun again. But again, I really urge the council that we can move forward on this, so again, the DSIC can get their paperwork into New York State and proceed forward.
Ms. Porterfield? So our next step is to approve it now?
Yes.
Okay.
On the 15th.
It's already been passed out of the way.
We had, well, we had the public hearing.
We just need to have it, it can be approved at our next council.
On the 15th.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, great.
Do we need a motion?
No. That's why we asked you for clarification.
Correct, very. Thank you.
We're going to have this question.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate that.
Okay, on to appointments to the IDA, Mr. Kozier?
Yep, and boy, I got four in a row, I didn't realize that. So we do have currently one opening at the IDA Board. And of course, we're going to have a second with Mr. Feltico, if he wins the election, have to resign as well. So I do want to open it up to all our council members, as we have done in the past. If there's anybody who you feel might be interested to serve at this board, let us know. The term is unlimited, does not expire, it's at the pleasure of the council. So we have some folks that have done it for a while. But again, we definitely have one opening. We're going to anticipate two, because once, we might as well just get this open at one time, because I would assume Carl and his wife will move from South, and he should be fine, so. Okay?
All right.
Any questions on that?
I have a question. So is this a seat that someone was in, is vacating, or what, the IDA?
Randy DeGenova moved out of City's connectivity with DeGenova and then retired. So this seat is open currently, and my intention would be find you a candidate you like that I would sign, so you fill in somebody.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions?
So yeah, so just get the information, maybe, say, what, maybe a week to 10 days, just so we can put maybe an agenda for, what, the 21st, right, to see if we can move this on. Am I right? Do I guess it right? The 21st.
21st.
And then we have the other agenda item there.
All right, and then we have appointment to the Board of Assessment Review.
Yep, and same thing. So Mary Delucendrill's position with the bar has expired, her term expires September 30th. So again, as we've done in the past, if folks can get me information resumes, if anybody interested in that seat, that is a five-year appointment to that position. So you can leave them the information, candidates. I hope we're glad to put that on the agenda for consideration, and I want to try again to get that out there versus, so we can move this individual.
But, very important, she wants to continue to serve.
Yes.
She does want to be reappointed and continue to serve.
That is correct.
So other questions, comments?
Okay, very good. We have ceremonial resolution recognizing the 125th anniversary of Dave Zat, Porterfield?
Well, it's pretty clear cut, they're celebrating 125 years, so on behalf of the city, since there are newspaper, like to them the ceremonial resolution.
Second?
Oh, second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then ceremonial resolution recognizing October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, something we do every year, so very important that we keep top of mind awareness about, inviting from the YWCA to come down. They have a month of different events coming up to, you know, to support the lessening of domestic violence, so if I could have a motion.
A moment.
Find Ms. Porterfield, second one, Mr. Riggi, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then our final item is discussion on Miracle on Craig Street, Ms. Porterfield?
Yeah, so we, we had them come in a couple of weeks ago, and we had some discussion about where we were going to go with this, in terms of the city giving them, giving, allowing them to take the building so they can move forward with getting their grants that they're in the pipeline, but because they need to have actual ownership of the building. So according to our last discussion, my understanding is that we were, we had meeting with the mayor, Mr. Kozier, and close to Miracle on Craig Street, and at that point, we were discussing just moving ahead. Were you with Mr. Feltico or Mr. Colvin? Was Mr. Colvin with there? That this time we would move ahead with that, so that they could go ahead and do the work that they need to do. But within the contract, there would be a reverter clause if they weren't able to move forward this project as intended. So do you want to add anything to that, Mr. Colvin?
I certainly can. One of the questions that came up was, in terms of the reverter clause, that use agreement, was the length of time in which the council felt comfortable giving them to complete the project? Because this is a, you know, a project that's going to take course over a couple of years, I think it is. Whether the city was inclined to give them two years to complete it, or a year, or, you know, whatever the council, and this is something that we talked about at the meeting, and Mayor McCarthy was in agreement of, you know, coming to the council to find out what the council wanted to do in terms of that reverter provision. We, the council wanted to give Miracle on Craig Street to bring the property up to where it needs to be.
Yes, this will prove skill, but.
So do they have any idea of what their, do they have a plan as far as what the timeframe it would take?
Because it's kind of like a multi-phase project, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect, if this is okay with the council president and city council, I think it was the first phase was going to be six months, I think, in that very initial phase, and for that, that was going to bring it up to code, but that's only like the beginning part, that doesn't mean the full capacity of the project, and I want to touch base on that.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's correct.
For the first six months, we will make infrastructure and mechanical or eight back, and then the following six months will be asked to be made, so it constantly will happen that the metro will reopen, so that we can, we'll describe.
Is going to be a sufficient timeline?
Yes, for the base improvements.
Personally, I would like us to either double or triple that, because, I mean, having been through major construction projects.
I think when you're pretty aggressive.
Everything can go wrong, so, I mean, I would like the council to consider, I personally feel comfortable, three years, but I don't know what everybody else feels comfortable with.
And if I may add, it's hard.
You know, I want this project to be successful, so I don't want to, I don't want to give you a roadblock right out of the gate, you know, a possible stumbling block right out of the gate. So does anyone else have a timeframe that is comfortable with, Ms. Porterfield?
Well, if you, if you think of one-year timeframe, I would get six months onto that, just for incidentals, and I think 18 months is probably a fair to get, you're talking just to get it open, just to do the minimal amount of work necessary for 18 months.
I'd actually like to extend that out to two years, because we started with one or two years. I'd like to minimally, let's, maybe two years, we don't know what you're going to run into if you go into the process. We don't know how weather's going to affect that, so I think that those are things we have no control over, so we should, I think that we should minimally go with two years. And then, you know, and then if, at that point, you see that you need an extension on further, then, you know, that's something to come back to discuss as well. But again, you've done a lot of work already, I know it's been a lot of work over a period of time, so to this point, to help you move forward and get over this next hurdle, I would, I would suggest that we go with the two years.
That's admirable of us.
George.
And again, I'm very comfortable with two years as well. Again, thank you to the committee and all volunteers that are working to get this built open, and I think as council members, we really want to see this to be a successful project, everyone sitting at the table here. Again, to put the six, you know, the year and a half is a little bit too tight, but again, two years, I feel very comfortable with that. And again, we'll be getting updates periodically anyway. We'll also know as you're drawing work permits from downstairs, so that'll tell us the progress that you are or are not making. And again, we are here as council members to support you, and thank you, and I support you too.
Is anyone uncomfortable with two-year time?
I'm good with the beers.
Make a motion.
All right.
Second.
All of you favor?
Aye.
Well, this is a historic and exciting day, to say the very least. Anything else to come before government operations this season? Ask for motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.
Call to order health and recreation, and we have two items on the agenda. First item is the CR, recognizing the senior center.
Yes, we're going to be celebrating our two years of operation coming up in October, so I want to recognize the volunteers at the H R, Hybernians, and the staff at Kingsway Community, and our seniors as well. They're planning to come out on October 15th to be in attendance for the senior center. And they've done some great work over there, as I mentioned, a couple events, they have a membership, 500 seniors enrolled, all at no cost to the seniors. They've served over 8,400 lunches to over 9,100 seniors, and that's only on two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So it's been a very successful endeavor. And again, the volunteers at the H R, who cook meals every single week for the folks, I think deserve this recognition at least, and again, the staff at Kingsway Community, so hope for support on this resolution.
Any comments?
Make a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Off the rack. Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Thank you.
I keep forgetting.
Okay, another CR.
Was this going to not help the brand? No, no. That's my first question.
Same with the second one.
CR recognizing the achievement of the Italian-American player in October 2019, Italian-American month.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, that's something we do every year, and Dolores Scalise, and I think Linda helped set up the little display that they do every year. And everyone's invited Wednesday at 10 o'clock at Veterans Park at the Columbus Memorial for a brief playing, I believe, yeah, the ninth, so it'll be this Wednesday at 10 o'clock. So I, like, um.
Motion. Move it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other business before health and rec?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Call to order public safety, and we have one item here on the agenda, is a CR recognizing October as National Fire Prevention Month, Ms. Perez.
Well, yep, just want to honor our first responders, National Fire Prevention Month. I know the chief has some, some tips he wants to share, and it's always a good thing to bring forward, so.
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any other business for public safety?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, call to order public service and utilities, have more discussion around the local law for community trade aggregation of electricity, Mr. Kozier?
Fortunately, we have the table, there's nobody here for the mayor's office, or Alex. Alex, not here either. Do you have anything you can add, or do we have?
I spoke with the mayor about this before he went away, and I think it's now just passing the local law, and then starts that, once that's in effect, it gives you the option to choose a provider, to like, you're not obligated to within. I, it'll pass. I, you know, passing on from him and also from myself, I can't give any reason not to move forward with local law at this point. And if for some reason decides we didn't want to move forward with the project, so you don't have to choose anyone. Does that make sense?
I understand it. So I just, I know there's a couple of providers, like there's one that specifically came and they brought people to come. And so obviously, they were advocating us to choose that particular one. So I did have some questions about where the other providers that were out there that would, you know, we could choose from. But you're saying that even if we pass the local law, we still don't have to choose a provider that doesn't lock us into anyone.
We're passing the local law gives you the option to choose one. So you can go through whatever process you want to select whichever one you want. It's just until you have the local laws, it's not an option. So if you want to potentially go down that road, the recommendation would be to pass a local law now and then you can start the discussions with the mayor, whoever you think is appropriate in terms of evaluating to provide or something.
But it doesn't obligate us to choose.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Riggi.
And that's the council's choice, our vote for the provider, if it comes to that?
Um.
Or is it the administration's?
99% sure it's the council, but that's not something I've really dug into yet. So I can get you an answer before you vote on that this week. But I'm 99% sure we're going to have to be the council authorized to.
Tell me for the council.
I can get you a 100% answer on that this week.
Pick up that 1%.
Are there other questions? Okay, so, so depends on obviously whether it was our choice or whether it was, came from the mayor's office. So can we move this contention on?
Yeah, with that, with that proviso.
Okay, come over.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else to come before public service and utilities will be adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.
Hello, order finance committee. The first item is just a review that we're having the public hearing on Tuesday for the mayor's proposed 2020 budget.
Do I need to move that? Are you thirty there?
No, it's okay. And the second item is Ms. Parrazo with budget dates.
Yep, so I asked for this to be on the agenda before, we received your email on October 4th because I had some concern because originally it was proposed that we would have two meetings with a possible third. But now since you've sent us the information, we're having three with a possible fourth. So I feel a little more comfortable with that. And then just while we have the public listening, those meetings are public and they're on October 16th, 17th, and 21st, all at 5:30 in this room, I suppose.
Yep.
Yep, that was all. So we received the information regardless, but I thought it was taken after.
Comments?
The 21st is the last?
Yes.
Why did I have 22nd in my mind?
That's an option if necessary.
Oh, okay.
And the original email was typo. I figured, that's why. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, call to order claims. We have a tax sur.
You got to, you got to get out of finance.
We already closed.
You adjourned it? Oh, I know, we just did that.
Yeah. And ask for a motion to go in executive session.
Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.